Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, so since this is the first meeting after an election, we have some board members that need to be sworn in. So would Beth Beebe, Jim Sorum, and Don Steigoff join me and our attorney over at the podium to be sworn in?
Mr. Chair, while we're assembling, I'd just like to read a item that was created by the MSBA, a ceremonial framework for ministering the oath of office to school board members. It's an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you'll be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personnel development. Having signed the acceptance oath and the oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office, which is going to be administered by the district's legal counsel, Mr. David Holman? Thank you.
Congratulations on your election. One last step here before you get to vote aye or nay on all the important issues that are coming up. So if you'll repeat after me, I'll try to do it slowly so you won't get lost. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I affirm that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number 271.
Independent school district 271.
Bloomington, Minnesota.
Bloomington, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations. I'm gonna give you the oath of office to sign.
Alright, well that was fun. Thank you for all these family members to come and take photos. It was a good experience. So since it's the first meeting of the calendar year, we also have to elect our new board officers. So we'll start with the election of chair. Do I have any nominations for chair?
I'd like to elect Don Steigoff.
The name Don Steigoff has been placed into nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, nomination for chair is closed. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of electing Don Steigoff as chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. If you're unanimously supported, Don Steigoff is our new chair.
Okay, moving on with the rest of our agenda here. First of all, before we move on to the rest of our officers, I would like to thank my fellow board members for your vote and support. It is an honor and privilege to serve as the chair of the Bloomington School Board for 2018. I also wish to thank the voters for their support in November that allowed me to return for a second term. And I also would like to congratulate Tom Bennett, Jim Sorum, and our newest board member, Beth Beebe, for also being elected in November. And I also wanted to say thank you to former director Rick Oliva for his four years of service that he spent here with us on this board before he chose not to run for reelection. So thank you to Rick, if you're listening to us. I'm sure he's watching, right? As school board, we are committed to representing our community's beliefs and values together with leadership, staff, students, parents, and families. In our community, we will meet the challenges we face and celebrate our wonderful achievements. Okay, moving on to the office of vice chair. Are there nominations for vice chair?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Nellie Corman.
I'll second that.
Okay, Nellie Corman has been nominated for vice chair. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Nellie Corman for vice chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Nellie is our new vice chair. Moving on to clerk, nominations for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Marine Bartolata.
I'll second if you want one.
They seconded the last one, so.
If you want to second, I'll second it.
Okay. Marine Bartolata has been nominated for clerk. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Marine Bartolata for clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, nominations for treasurer?
I'd nominate Dick Bergstrom for treasurer.
Second? Dick Bergstrom has been nominated for treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, all in favor of Dick Bergstrom for treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Dick, congratulations. You are now our treasurer. So do we have to do anything about Rod? Do we have to say anything? I'm sorry, say it again?
Deputy Clerk Rod.
Yeah, we don't have to, we just say it. We don't have to nominate him, correct? Oh, we have to nominate him, okay.
I'm sure we can find a nomination.
Okay, so we also need to do a nomination for deputy clerk, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I nominate Rod Zivkovich.
Rod Zivkovich has been nominated for deputy clerk. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Rod Zivkovich for deputy clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations. You are the deputy clerk and I don't think he's here.
Gotta be present to win.
We should've nominated him for something else.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have a request to add an item to consent agenda part A for an extended field trip. So move to amend the agenda.
Oh, is that this one?
Second. Okay, moved and seconded the amend the agenda to include field trip into part A. So everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so the agenda is amended to include the field trip.
Amended agenda.
Okay. So now all in favor of the amended agenda?
Is it this one?
You moved it already, I guess we could second it. Second, all right. So all in favor of the amended agenda? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time is when we will have the recognition of students, staff, and public. First of all, I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Ingemont, principal of Oak Grove Middle School, and he's going to introduce Radar, our therapy dog.
Madam Chairman, Chairman Steigoff and superintendent Fujitaki school members, thanks for letting me bring Radar here today. And Radar's our therapy dog employee here. Sorry, Radar's with me today. We're doing some training in this room, so he was calmed down and I was doing part of the treats around here, so he knows he's smelling himself. Radar's therapy dog here at Oak Grove Middle School. He's been here 11 weeks. In 11 weeks, he's worked with students countless times. I had my social worker give me some data today. We've been collecting data along the way. And in an average week, he's used in 30 mental health sessions with students daily. He's with our students in our special ed strive program when they're level three EBD students. He's kinda like working with a middle schooler, just unpredictable. Some of the most common things Radar is used for throughout the day is helping to calm our students with significant anxiety, assist in mediations where his presence helps students maintain a cool head. Students who are nonverbal in times of stress and dysregulation often become calm and open up with staff when Radar's in their presence. Because dogs are nonjudgmental, they help students feel connected with school. Students are able to further develop a sense of responsibility in the care of the dog because at times they're with Radar, they're taking him to walk, or out to the bathroom, or they're petting him, grooming him at different times throughout the day. Helps us feel that sense of feeling blown and connected with Radar and a sense of feeling kinda special because they're with Radar and other students may not be at the times. And a few things, you know, the radar throughout the day is he's with me 24/7. So I mean, he comes home with me and I bring him to school every day. But when I bring him to school, I unhook his leash and he's in the hallways of the main office that is working with students in different capacities. My social worker, my counselors, my psychologist, the psychologist noted that she had a student walk with Radar for about 20 minutes in the morning because she was having a tough time. And she literally went from not talking to our psychologist to talking to the psychologist in the morning and go to class. Our social worker's reporter, he takes Radar to the strive classroom with other students. And the regular students work with Radar in the strive classroom and have him on leash and feel good because they kinda help calm Radar, work with students in a way that they feel a sense of responsibility because Radar's able to connect with other students. And his calm demeanor and temperament throughout the day just allows him to work with a variety of students in situations. His environment is a small environment, so this environment here and the audience is a bigger thing that I knew during the day that I needed to come down and kind of expose him to this because his best environments is that one-on-one, that one-on-three, that small group situation where he's working with students. And again, brings that sense of regulation to a student throughout the day and that sense of calmness. But also it's that chance of when students have a chance to walk with Radar and be with Radar, he's able to settle them down and feel a sense of comfort. And there's, as I said, a number of students have daily appointments with Radar, whether it's a lunch bunch or just work with students in mediation. And when students get in mediations, you know, we need students to have cool heads in mediations. And Radar's a good distraction for students throughout the day. And, you know, he gets busy visiting a lot of people and then he, you know, he is more than willing to sit down and take a little nap himself and slow down the day. So when a student has a chance to have Radar in their presence and he can lay down and put his head in their lap and they can pet him and he falls asleep and gets up against, that sense of affection that kids really appreciate and enjoy, you can see them kinda light up. But again, and a daily, any given day, he's working with kids all day long. And he's just been a great addition to the schools and just a great employee for the Bloomington Public Schools. And we're lucky to have Radar at our school. And students every day enjoy seeing Radar at the buses and a chance to come to the office and see him in situations. And there's just a number of students that are just, it's interesting to see. I've read the research and you hear different stories, but actually to see it in practice is just something else. To see it, how he helps a student in a stressful situation or anxiety, or students who are just having a tough day. And just how it helps a student light up to feel that sense of responsibility that they're walking with Radar, or they're helping with Radar, and they can talk about that during the day. So it's a special thing to see that and it's been a great addition. And we really enjoyed having Radar at our school. So on behalf of Oak Grove Middle School staff, I say thank you to the school board. And a special thanks to Jim Sorum to help give me the contact because Radar comes to us from Luck, Wisconsin. Sunshine kennels and lory peppers is the kennel. And what we found this summer, there's a high demand and low inventory of therapy dogs. And this has kinda came last second. I tried to exhaust many options through a colleague in Lakeville with various kennels and various kennels in the summer and to no luck. And then superintendent Fujitaki happened to have a conversation with Jim Sorum. And as things work, doors open up and opportunities come and there's a chance to make a connection. We did and it was a great opportunity. So we're lucky to have Radar and I, again, thank you, everyone.
Madam Chair, I just wanna thank Brian for doing such a tremendous job. When we first started talking about this, I said, "I live across the street, so I could probably be the mentor." But when he said 24/7, then all of a sudden I started thinking about it again. So it was good that he stepped up and takes care of him all the time as a trainer. I don't know if we're gonna have another opportunity for someone else to be a mentor, but it is a time-consuming job. And so Brian, on behalf of all the students who've already had fun with Radar and for the future ones, thank you very much for accepting the responsibility for doing this.
Can I put in a special request that Radar comes every Monday night?
Monday night, yeah.
Maybe we need our own one. Our own Radar.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, ready to move on to the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation, 2018. Would someone like to read the resolution?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached proclamation recognizing January 15, 2018, as Martin Luther King Junior Day.
Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation. And then we can vote on it then, but see if there's any discussion. I'll read it for you first. So it says, "Whereas the Bloomington Public Schools join our nation in recognizing January 15, 2018, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and whereas Bloomington recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s life and work reflected the importance of making America a place where equality and justice, freedom, and peace could grow and flourish. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington Board of Education, Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, does hereby proclaim January 15, 2018, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and ask all citizens of Bloomington to remember and reflect on the principles of racial equity and nonviolence, social change espoused by Martin Luther King Jr., and to rededicate themselves to the philosophy that we can all share the dream for a better life, not only in Bloomington, but also in the world." Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I would like to ask our Human Rights Commissioner Najma Daib, a student at Kennedy High School, to please come forward and accept this. I'll meet you at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy secured progress on civil rights in the United States. In 1964, Reverend King received a Nobel Peace Prize for his work to end racial segregation and racial discrimination through nonviolent means and civil disobedience. So I want to thank the school board for accepting this proclamation.
Okay, holiday cards. On behalf of the school board, we wish to thank the following art teachers and their students for providing original pieces of artwork for the 2017 holiday cards sent out by school board members and the superintendent. Alexandra Loosebrook from Valley View Elementary School and Ann Gerton from Olson Middle School. Alexandra, I think you're here. If you'd like to come and say a few words?
I just wanted to thank the school board for giving my kids the opportunity at Valley View Elementary to do the holiday card this year. They really enjoyed doing it and we spent one week working together and coming up with some neat ideas. And the cards went out to the community of Bloomington. So thank you very much.
Tonight, we are pleased to recognize two staff members who have been selected as tech exceptional teachers. I'd like to ask John Weiser, Executive Director of Technology and Information Services, and Holly Skagsum, Digital Learning Coordinator, to introduce the honorees.
Good evening, Chair Steigoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. Holly Skagsum, Digital Learning Coordinator, and I are here tonight to honor two technology leaders, two teachers. Each year, we nominate an elementary teacher and a secondary teacher for their advanced work in implementing technology to improve education for kids. These are teachers who take risks, who work hard to push the envelope of their own teaching, and who often become an example in their school to help others follow in their footsteps. The two teachers we're honoring are Whitney Dieterman, here's Whitney, who is a first grade teacher at Indian Mounds Elementary, and Catherine Haddad. Catherine couldn't be here tonight. Catherine's a language arts teacher at Kennedy High School. I'll read a few words about Catherine and then I'll let Holly introduce Whitney to you. Catherine Haddad has taught language arts since 1999 and is the department chair of Kennedy High School, Language Arts Department Chair of Kennedy High School. Her enthusiasm for learning is evidenced in the engaging conditions she creates and by the technology-rich learning experiences that ignite dynamic conversation among her students. Her students share ideas and connect using a diverse selection of digital tools and instructional methods within her Moodle courses. Catherine's name might be familiar to you all because we asked Catherine to join our team last year because of her innovative work in online learning, flexible instruction. We had her come over. And so the second part is about her work, the second half of the year last year. Catherine joined us in co-developing a framework for online courses to be offered by Bloomington Public School teachers with BPS curriculum and for BPS students. She worked collaboratively to research, share, and develop opportunities for the inaugural group of BPS online teachers to explore best practices for instruction and programming. Catherine's currently writing one of these courses for English 12 Humanities, and she'll be teaching it in the fall to Bloomington students. For these reasons and many more, Catherine Haddad is an exceptional teacher.
Hello, everybody. This is Whitney Dieterman. You guys may recognize her. I've brought some video of her classroom to the board, previous meetings in the fall. So you may have remembered the video I showed with her little first graders using their iPads in math class. So this is Whitney, and I'm just gonna read a little bit about why she received this exceptional teacher award. Whitney Dieterman is a first grade teacher at Indian Mounds Elementary. If you walk into Whitney's classroom of 24 first graders, you're gonna see joy, excitement, movement, flexible seating, and students who love to learn. Technology use in Whitney's classroom is seamless and integrated. Last school year, Whitney and her team implemented a flex learning model at the end of each day where students were given a menu of QR codes. From the menu, students would choose what they wanted to learn and when. It's kinda fun. You might walk into Whitney's classroom at the end of the day and see a little kiddo taking out their yoga mat and choosing one of the parts on their menu to do their yoga for the day. I wasn't in her classroom, but Katrina Mezera was, and a little boy said to Katrina, "I'm gonna do my yoga today because it just feels like one of those days where I need some yoga." Anyways, I wish I could've seen it, but Katrina said it was wonderful. Whitney utilizes seesaw and app smashing to encourage her students to share, collaborate, think out loud, be creative, and make their learning visible. Whitney is always willing to try something new and is constantly iterating with technology in her classroom. Whitney is a leader in technology evidenced by her titles of Seesaw Ambassador and Curriculum Technology Advocate for her building. Whitney frequently volunteers to facilitate district professional development where her expertise and passion for technology has led other teachers to take on new practices. These reasons and many more make Whitney Dieterman an exceptional teacher. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any students? I don't see any, but just in case, do we have any students that are here for government class that are here? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the organization for 2018.
Madam.
For meetings and study sessions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to move letters A through J of the agenda.
Second. Right, it's been moved and seconded. Just wanna highlight a few things here. This is all of our things like the place that the meetings will be here, the dates and times will remain the second and fourth Mondays at 7:00. The third Monday is reserved for a study session or a meeting if needed, determined by any particular cause. Those things will all stay the same. All of the other things, also, just wanna take note of under board representation that there are other groups and committees that this board has representation to, and we have different board members going to those. So we have Mr. Bergstrom goes to intermediate district 917. Beth Beebe will be representing us at the Minnesota State High School League. Jim Sorum will be going to the TIES, the District's Data Processing Joint Board. And Nellie Corman will be our representative of the Association of the Metropolitan School District, and Beth will be the alternate. And Nellie Corman will also be the legislative liaison with the Minnesota School Boards Association. And MSBA has delegates for their yearly assembly they do, and our delegates that, they're on a two-year, so they did this last year also, from our board are Marine Bartolata, Dick Bergstrom, and Nellie Corman. So if there's no other discussion, is there any other discussion on this? All right, then we will vote, all in favor of approving A through J. Was it J you said?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor of A through J? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, moving on. To... Now we're on to part A, which is the consent agenda, the board business. Is there a motion for them?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just to highlight the amended item on your be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District approves the field trip for the attached list. And that's because it's an overnight trip for the Kennedy Choir. It does need board approval. So we add that to part A. Approval.
All right, thank you. All right, all in favor of moving forward, part A? Agenda, aye?
Aye.
And opposed? All right, on to part B, board goals for 2017-18 mid-year progress report. I thought they were going on the screen. Yep, but they're not going on the screen at all? Oh, okay. I was looking, just waiting for them to pop up there. Okay, so everybody's had a chance to look at these, so I will highlight a few. And then if there's any discussion on this, this is just our update, so, a progress report. First of all, under governance. Or anything anybody else wants to highlight that they've been working on?
Nice to know that we have the goals and we're following through on them.
Anything else? All right, that brings us to board member reports. Does anyone like to go first?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Bergstrom.
Glasses, so I don't mess this one up. Since the last time we had a meeting, we had our holiday vacation, so there weren't an enormous amount of opportunities, but I did want to draw a light and give, share a little love with the Bloomington Combined Nordic Ski Team. Last week, I was over at Theodore Wirth for their cross-country ski team. This is combined Jefferson and Kennedy. The start time, temperature was three degrees and when they came across the finish line, it was, I think it was around zero. So, a lot of really hearty and well-dressed parents cheering these students on. Couple of folks had cowbells and you can kind of hear them throughout the course. If you've never been to a cross-country ski meet in the middle of winter, it's fun, the sun's going down, the kids are racing hard, and everyone's cheering and everyone cheers for every student as they come up some of the real challenging hills. If you haven't seen Wirth, they do ski on a portion of their golf course over there and it's not flat and straight. So, really, really interesting. That same evening, I snuck in a little bit late down the hall here at Oak Grove Middle, the swimming pool and managed to watch Bloomington Kennedy swim against Robinsdale Cooper. And Kennedy was up by two points going into the last heat and they made a valiant effort, but they came up a little short. It was 87-83, went to Robinsdale Cooper. But another really, really passionate group of cheer, fans, the parents get down in there if you haven't seen it, everyone who's running a clock, doing the ticket sales, all the parts and parcels of these programs is a parent volunteer. So, when you have somebody that swims, you're automatically signed up for all of other fun stuff. But it's lots of fun to see another great team working really hard. As always, if you're interested in becoming a volunteer in the district, you can go to any one of our 15 schools, go to their front desk, ask where you might be sent to fill out the volunteer form. There's a little, a little bit of paperwork and then you go in, you go through some training. But if you're interested in doing some volunteering in our schools, you can go that route or you can also contact any one of the school's PTA councils. Many, many thanks to our PTA people for making, making our district one of the most successful. So, that's what I have. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just would like Dick maybe to comment a little bit more about the outdoor activity where everybody was bundled up so much and then you come in here to a 70 or 80 degree swimming pool hall and you have to take off almost all of your clothes to enjoy that swimming meet.
My preference is the cold weather, but I'm one of those, those people. So, it was a nice switch. It was a nice way to thaw out and cheer for a good team.
We don't promote taking off all of your clothes in the swimming pool area.
No, there's appropriate apparel available.
I did take my jacket off, yes.
Okay, does anybody else have a, any report they want to do? Or anything?
Well, I did. Sorry, go ahead. You go ahead. Okay. Well, no, I'm really excited about our MSBA leadership conference that's coming this week, so I'm really looking forward to that. And then, previous to that, I'd like to invite you to the meeting of school members of color. We're going to be holding this meeting on Wednesday from 6, 4 to 6 at the Minneapolis Hilton Hotel. And if you recall, last year or two years ago, the board members of African Heritage decided to get together and start their own group of MSBA members of color. And after that initiative, then a few school board members, myself included, decided to start the group of board of directors of Latino Heritage. So, I've been given the opportunity to be the keynote speaker at this coming meeting on Wednesday. And so, we're going to have the presence of representative from the Department of Education who will be there, also all the people from the Minnesota School Board Association, including the executive director, and there will be some legislators who would also be present. So, if you would like to join us, you are welcome to come.
Is that the one right by the new stadium or am I backwards?
The Minneapolis Hilton Hotel. I don't know. Does anybody know?
Yes, it is. It's on 10th and Marquette.
Yes, that's what it is.
Do you want to go first? I know I'm new, but I've been very busy even before getting here and have met so many of those that are in leadership here at the district and have really enjoyed the opportunity to get to know more of the workings and the very fine and qualified people that I have met. And I am very encouraged by these opportunities. Just this past week, I visited Westwood Elementary School and will be an ambassador to that school, so you'll be hearing more about me there. I plan to go to the kindergarten registration at the end of the month and really enjoyed, you know, talking with Hugh Roberts, the principal there, and seeing teachers just really actively making creative classrooms and engaging their students. Every student was just very engaged. That was very exciting. I also got to meet with Gina Miller and she is charge of the early childhood education and that's just really something I'm passionate about and very exciting to see what our district is doing at that very early level in engaging parents and helping them and giving them some of the tools that they need, not just dropping their kids off, but helping parents to become, you know, more engaged with their kids and knowing ways to work with them and prepare them for school. So, that's really something that's very close to my heart and my passion. So, I really enjoyed that. I also have been connecting with others at community education with Alex Locke and learning about our Kids Safari program and our adult and youth education programs. And he wanted me to make sure that I let you know that community education doesn't end, you know, just during the school day. It ends at the end of the evening. There's a lot that goes on into the evening and so the community needs to know that there's lots of opportunities for you to be a part of that. Let's see, oh, I have all kinds of appointments next week I'll report on, but really appreciate the welcoming of the board here and working with Les Fujitake and Deb Bunkel, really being a gracious person and showing me the ropes. So, thank you to all of you. Anyone else? I just have one thing then, we talked about the organization of the board. All of the board members have ambassador schools. We did not switch except for Beth Beebe took over the ones that Rick Aliva had. The rest of us are keeping our ambassador schools. And the other thing is, is we all stayed, we, every board member listens in on the negotiations for each contract and we all stayed with the ones we have because there will not be any negotiations because they're all settled. So, we weren't going to switch at this time. So, I just want to make sure I make those points. So, moving on, Mr. Fujitaki.
Great, thank you. Please recall, last month, the school board refreshed the strategic plan and on the kiosk behind there are new placards for the vision and strategic direction statements, right? Second is Governor Dayton has appointed me to workforce development board. The mission of the board is to analyze and recommend workforce policy suggestions to the governor and to the state legislature. Finally, administration is working with the city manager of the city of Bloomington to schedule a joint school board, city council meeting at the end of February. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the board? At this time, the meeting will be adjourned then.